Okay. Dave, we can introduce the group. We're here to discuss ACTI, Conscient National Player.
Mary Morgan is our executive director. Claudia is with...
Claudia Plata, Director of Marketing for a Tidings National Bank and an Executive Board Member of ACTI.
John Kolenko, Partied Catering Hampton Events. I'm working with operations and food and beverage.
Peter Herman, Co-ordinator, Rogers Productions. We're advising and consulting on the production of the concert.
And we have a number of people here in our audience as well.
Do you want to introduce them?
I think we should. Well, Wally, do you want to introduce them?
I met Wally about two years ago about this.
Yeah, right. Wally Smith, the President of the Conic Public Broadcasting Company, Manager, Living P P.
Steve Maietta Cook, Mayor of the Bronx.
I'm Robert Ross, Vice President of Southampton Hospital and a former Southampton County Deputy Supervisor.
Dennis McDermott, Riverhead Project.
Fort Worth. Pat Snyder is there.
And back there we have our partner Clara.
I'm Charlie Martinez, Martha Clara Vineyard.
Molly O'Connor, Martha Clara Vineyard.
What you should say is recovering Deputy Supervisor.
I should say that's right there for the town hall.
All right. And this is Riverhead Town Board. Why don't you introduce yourselves because they don't necessarily know.
Craig Zidick, Riverhead Town Fire Department.
I'm Dan Heck, Chief Inspector.
George Gabrielson.
Oh, Charles Gabrielson.
Sean Walter.
Good to know.
John Dunleavy.
Jim Woobin.
Oh, the Deputy Supervisors.
And Jill Lewis.
So, in all this, concentrate on making these two gentlemen happy because if they're happy, we're happy. So, who's presenting the rock?
It's Mary. Thank you very much for meeting with us. We really appreciate it. And thank you Deputy Supervisor Jill Lewis for setting up a meeting earlier where we met with the Fire Marshal, the Chief of Fire Marshal, the Chief of Police, our Planning and Development Administrator, and our Town Attorney. And we had some good feedback from all of them and we thank you for that. We did introduce ourselves. This is fabulous. And I just wanted to mention our early supporters, Pat Snyder and David O'Korn and Steve Maietta. This organization ACTI has been two years in the making. We have a lot of support and encouragement from the local crowd, the community, and now the business community. So, it's... There's been a lot of activity before we got to this point. I think we can start with that. Our mission. Oh, yes. Our mission statement? To unite and support...
Tara, if you could turn that. I don't know whether it...
I don't... Yeah, I think because of...
Well, you can move it. Logos.
Tara, am I in your way? I'll move boots.
It's okay.
There you go.
You sure?
I don't know that anybody can... I can't read it though.
No.
But it doesn't look like the public can read it on that TV.
There you go. You got a frame.
Okay. Good. Perfect.
To unite and support the nonprofit community of the East End towns, the August End towns, Riverhead, South End, South Hall, South Row and East End. And to raise awareness of the not-for-profits and the role in making the East End one of the most desirable places to live in the world.
We like the way they put Riverhead first.
There's more to come. Our vision is... An umbrella organization that publicly showcases and supports the culture and services of the not-for-profit organizations of the East End towns. Unifying unity and fellowship around a common purpose. A unifying voice leveraging strategic assets of collaboration and awareness support in a new era of fundraising and integration. Fund resource. Now, a word about the East End Fund that we are creating from this special event tonight. I put a sheet in your handbook that I think that, and Dave Ahorn can speak to this, as Executive Director of Walmart Community Foundation, is what makes this unique, sort of, to the East End of Long Island, maybe unique to South County, maybe unique in the nation. And one of the things that makes this unique, it's sort of a regional fund that we're trying to create, is that we have written into the bylaws that there will be an advisory committee consisting of one representative from each of the five East End towns to review proposals and to make recommendations on funding. So, even those people will change every year, but I think that's a significant component that really makes this a meaningful fund resource for all our not-for-profits, which there are over 1,000 East End, and every single one will be eligible to submit an application for funding, from hospitals to...
Is that done much easier on a new basis?
There'll be three grant cycles a year for which the organizations can apply. My staff will coordinate all of the proposals coming in. We'll first review them from a fiscal and from a governance standpoint, present them all to the members, and then they'll be part of that decision-making process as to which organization will get awards.
And it really will support the smallest organizations. You know, a lot of larger organizations have infrastructures that allow them to fundraise easily. There's all these little organizations doing really important work that have trouble fundraising. So, this will be a nice way for them to be able to have another place where they can go for it.
And then working through our staff, what we try to do is balance that out because we understand some of the larger organizations actually have, you know, the high-paid grant writers so they can put a professional package together. So, what we do is we kind of redraft everything so everything is on an even playing field so that when we get presented, you know, those that have more assets and have higher professionals don't necessarily automatically rise to the top as well based on merit of the programs and that's being...
So, the event that's going to raise the funds for our initial launch of the East End Fund is going to happen at Martha Clara Vineyard. And it will be a day-long activity. In the morning will be a daytime event called the ACTI Family Festival, Monday, August 19th.
It's my wife's birthday, just in case. My wife's birthday.
We can have a very big cake. We'll roll it out.
She's brilliant.
We've listed it as a community celebration with music, activities that the not-for-profits will have going, a farmer's market, a stage performance, local food and drink vendors coordinated through Hampton Event Management, John Kolenko, and the Riverhead Restaurant Group. And the Riverhead Restaurant Group is something that Dennis McDermott has started, and out of that has come another committee, we'll call it the Riverhead Committee, of which we have Pat Snyder and Jill Lewis, Amineke Dovlens, and others joining. And the idea for that is that we're going to feature not only Riverhead Restaurants at the event, where they'd like to be, but also identify ways to draw people back into downtown Riverhead before the evening event and after the... That would be fun. Would you like to speak to that at all?
No, I think it's important that you guys come through Riverhead Town and the whole thing, the market, the public, we want to get on the line.
We love Dennis McDermott.
He's very cool.
He's Riverhead's number-one cheerleader. We're just waiting. I haven't moved to Riverhead, but we'll get him here.
I got to Flanders. I'm close.
That's our often telltale.
The Riverhead Restaurant Group that I put it together is a coalition of restaurants to sort of market and brand Riverhead as a dominant nation, and they'll have a nice presence at the ACTI event, which is really good to focus, walk people there, they can actually see what we have to offer downtown as a start.
Mary, can you let the board know a little bit more about how the event's going to run at two times a lot, you know, what you're tracking, that you have an application to play?
So, the morning event is what I'm speaking about now from 11:00 to 2:00, geared towards families, geared to showcase not-for-profits. We have what? Tara?
From where we are, we have an opportunity, I think, to reach out to over 100 nonprofits, restaurants, and really make it a very festive atmosphere on field there. And based on approvals that we're hoping to get with our presentation, I think it's just going to be a really spectacular event for the afternoon for the families, for kids, you know, and the participation. So, we're trying to offer them a great time, a reason to come down, to come to Riverhead, to, you know, go down into town maybe after the festival's over with what town that offers.
And there'll be a very low admission price for this. However, we will... Everyone will have a ticket, even the babies, so you have an absentee check and a number of something. And a lot of the not-for-profits who are going to be participating are going to... Part of their participation fee is going to be to lend us volunteers because we are going to be over-volunteered at this event, working under John's direction to make sure that everything's...
One of the things that we had a problem with this, to get people downtown even during the pumpkin hunting season, and so I'm just putting this out to Jill and Dennis, who somebody will remember, ask the highway superintendent, we just purchased another one of those signs, the road signs that you see on the expressway that say "Road Closed" or something. So, if we could put that up on 105, the corner of 105 and Sound Avenue, directing people downtown, that's a perfect location for it. So, we have to remember to try to do that, and we will own it shortly.
Can you get the chula cloth?
The chula cloth?
Downtown.
Oh, right.
Sorry, sir.
So, then there is another event, the fundraising event of the evening, the ACTI Dance Party East End. Let me use Peter to talk a little bit about that.
Why, Dan, do you change?
Yeah. You know, I just want to throw one thing in since my thought, the Bridgehampton National Bank, the name is there. This is the largest single sponsorship event we've ever done. And the reason that we decided to do it, two reasons. One, it's all for the East End and that's what we've always been about. And the team of people that came to us, we felt so confident that it was locally based and that they would be able to, that we'd be able to really pull it off, we thought we had to do it. So, just, it's a huge thing for us to do that. We're putting a lot of resources behind it.
A lot of money.
And we've got a lot of...
Before I turn it over to you, because you were talking about... What I... I'll tell you this, first off, the event starts at 6:00 PM, it'll end by 10:00, 10-ish. We have sufficient security force, it's a security team that I've worked with before that they have, geez, they have over 60 venues that they secure in Long Island and New York. They specifically are under contract for Jones Beach. This is CSS. Richardson and I are meeting with the chief. He's the director for CSS, Conscious Security Specialist. We understand the venue. We have a site plan that we are presenting that shows four emergency response lines so that from all directions, whether that's south, east, or west. The facility is wonderful, it's beautiful. It is 159,000 square feet, which means that we're laying, we have more space than we need for 5,000 people. That's what our hope is to accomplish, to open itself, 5,000 tickets. The nature of the music that's going to take place is an evolution of dance music. It starts from the '70s, the classic disco. At this point, I'll introduce my partners, who was instrumental in the dance music scene back in the '70s and '80s. We wrote and produced for a lot of artists, specifically Madonna and David Bowie. Madonna's song, "Material Girl," like the version, that record, "Material Girl" was the record that we produced. We produced David Bowie's record, we produced that dance. We produced a biggest tape that Diana Ross ever had, "I'm Coming Out and Upside Down." We produced songs for Sister Sledge. In fact, our anthem song for Sister Sledge that was written by my partner, Myle Rogers, is "We Are Family."
I love that song.
So, the greatest dancer, lost in music. And our band will be performing this evening. That band's called Sheik. Sheik specifically was recognized for a song called "Freak Out." So, there'll be a lot of audience participation.
It's a different key.
But Myle was really prolific in writing and producing from '70s to the '80s. And it's his vision that, you know what, we should be all-inclusive, that this should be an event that brings the '70s and the '80s and the '90s and today's dance music into the mix.
That's the best.
So, there's some DJs who are actually remaking a lot of the music that we created, because that's what they do, that we've invited to participate, and it's going to be a fun night. It's going to be a happy night, it's uptempo, it's have a good time, and everybody will have a great, great experience. If there's any questions specifically to the site, I'm happy to answer them, or John Kolenko, who will be managing the site for us, can answer them. We have in your packages specifically the overview of the venue, and then we have a blow-up... We have an overview of the entire market player that you can then a blow-up of the specific concert here.
I know there's numerous entrances in there. How many entrances are you going to have?
There's one general admission entrance, that's off of Herrick's. And then there's a VIP, an ADA, and a drop-off entrance off of Sound.
Okay. So, you have two entrances.
So, there's two entrances to the venue for the public. There's four entrances for the emergency response teams.
All right. So, Dave, that's really a question for you. Does that work? How would we move in people, 3,800 people of Herricks?
I think it'll work. I think with our experience with the beer festival, it's not too bad. People will have a close action on Herricks, Herricks and Sound, and then other ones back for a...
So, if you're coming up Sound, you're going to have to make a right turn onto Herricks to get into the property.
And it's my understanding that they've had success doing this before at Martha Clara, who run events there, hopefully in the last past years.
I don't know if they've ever done that. Have you guys ever done 3,800 people at once? It's going to be 5,000 people.
Yeah, yes, we have. It's been in the range of 4,500 before on a Saturday afternoon as well. Where this event will be happening, the Beer Festival.
Because I think we got a little jammed up there, I think you realized later.
He lives on Herricks. We're waiting river, we're fine.
Pull a boot up front while you're paying. So, something.
I'm sorry, my shirt.
Additionally, one of the issues that has been remedied by us was that we've added a Herricks Lane address, so 660 Herricks Lane in the past, a lot of people would have to come through the 602.5, we'd have to reroute them. So, having an address on Herricks Lane will make things move a little bit more smoothly. And additionally, this is a Monday event where the Beer Festival is traditionally held on a Saturday.
And Monday is the same day that the big concerts have been held before. So, the college is on Monday, back to the ranch, the day that they get their contract, those are what Monday is.
And those are 10,000 to 17,000 people, those particular events at this point. I think at any one time, if we can sell out, we'll have, the recent 5,000 special for the evening event would be great, it would be an extreme success. And, you know, we can look at it and hopefully, you know, give it again down the line.
It's really good to start from there.
And build a history here, you know, we're all learning from this because it's the first time we've been to us here.
Didn't we also start that possibly looking to trial, like admitting, having to park downtown, and trial, like back and forth through the area? I love this place, a tender, other kind of town that might be...
Yeah, we definitely haven't gotten to the point of looking at all the additional possible transportation options that might be involved. We're definitely looking at that.
I was going to say, it needs to stay in the research shop.
And directions are going to be listed on the website or something like that? And you can send more point five or something like that?
Yeah, you know, we're working, we're currently working on content on the website. We definitely can do that.
And I would think with my request for my suggestions about, is that we send them all from the library and then to...
At least we'll work with you on exactly what directions we should put into all of our materials.
I'm happy with kind of how you're splitting it. We'll be, right out of the general population, probably, you know, 700 to 1,000 people will come in as, under the VIP in the Bridgehampton National Bank Lounge, which will have direct mailing to because they'll be getting some kind of package and information from us so we can actually give them a map. So, that, I think that would be tremendously in what we're trying to do here.
It seems that better than half the attendees are sponsor-oriented. So, they're actively contributing to the event, they're happy to be, they're getting tickets for sponsorship. So, we know that, hey, who they are. In terms of the public transportation, I believe we will be looking at a plan to talk to MTA's for railroad and for blessing and letting people know, perhaps even advertising, to have people take public transportation and end up in various locations where there'll be a shadow bus.
It might work well, honestly, to work with the railroad because they did that with the Tall Ships Festival, and they brought, make a lot more than 5,000 people out of the Tall Ships Festival over the weekend. So, I don't know whether you, at this stage, in the first one, you want to do that, but if it grows the way you're thinking, you know, having the MTA, they actually put extra trains on for that, having them do that on a Monday, they may do it.
Good idea. We'll check first.
We know a limited...
He's been getting away with some things.
So, I'm going to turn the event to John Kolenko to speak to the site and the event operations.
I just want to add one quick thing, and I know we go into this a little bit later, but you're a little modest, you know, he, they, his company and him personally has been doing these kinds of festivals around the world. So, when he comes to talk to us, he's got a book this thick with every little detail. So, we feel like very, really good hands.
We're very happy to have you.
August night, I like it.
Your largest events go up to what size?
10,000.
That's too much for this.
No, no. He's looking at an event from, you know, an area I think a lot of people would not normally look at an event for.
A large event.
Large events, yes. So, you know, we're kind of taking this all into consideration. Hopefully, that this can grow into something that we can establish, you know, as a year-round way to generate money for East End not-for-profits. And that's one of the things I love about this event. I was very involved with the offer to see for 10 years in a VIP tent, and what we did was we brought all the food vendors and beverage vendors into the VIP tent and helped create that atmosphere. And that's where the revenue stream really was there. So, we tried to offer them a great experience, you know, working with Dennis, trying to build up a good local base for inside the VIP tent. So, when you buy a VIP ticket, you can come in there and experience any one of, you know, four restaurants, caterers, and, you know, and beverage distributors, and some great wine from Martha Clara. So, we have an opportunity there to, you know, give people a great experience before the show. They come in, they eat, they dine, and they can walk out onto the field, or they can sit in the VIP area that overlooks the stage. The Bridgehampton National Bank will be a small tent, and this is all in your diagrams, attached to the VIP tent, which is for big sponsors, for special people who, you know, are really contributing to the event. And the ancillary support for that will be all the catering, there's a catering tent in the background. We can review all the details of that with the chief as far as compliances go with setbacks, access, flames, or whatever we have to do there. We've been pretty successful in the past working with what we're trying to do.
So, general mission will have available food available?
General mission, there'll be restaurants on the field under, like, 10-by-10s and farmer's market-style food trucks. We're trying to bring that aspect of it that seems to be very successful. People love that. Board of Health likes it because it's self-contained, so that's another issue we have to deal with Board of Health, which, you know, we've been very successful with. I've already talked to Bruce Johnson on this occasion and in the past, other events similar where we have food trucks and VIPs under a VIP tent like that. So, as far as food and beverage goes, we'll coordinate with Board of Health, making sure that we're compliant with them, using the facility to, you know, the best use of the facility, you know, and the layout, and making sure that we are compliant with setbacks and access for emergency vehicles, for fire marshal, for, you know, whatever they have to do to get in there, and whatever we have to do to make sure that everybody is safe and sound. Well, trying to give everybody a great experience, there's lots of food and, you know, a reason to want to come back next year and support it and talk about this, talk about what happened to Riverhead, and this is where it is. So, you know, I think we have a great opportunity here. We're creating a brand-new event that I think is going to have great legs and a good opportunity to generate millions of dollars over the years for the East End, you know, Long Island.
That seems like a great pick, and we'll get you on stuff the right, you know, we are...
This show may complement the production of this thing, but Bridgehampton National Bank does a lot of East End. They step up to the plate and they really help out. And they'll be coming to Main Street. You'll be coming to Main Street?
This is a former Suffolk County National Banking.
Yeah, they do step up to the plate.
Beverages.
Thank you very much. I always say that.
I know you've got the wine covered, but we'd like to make sure that some, we've got a little bit of a microbrewery thing going here. We're going to make sure that we reach out to Long Island. A mustache brewery may not be ready to go. Long Island, local brewer right at Holystown. Steve Wirth's at Digger's, and I can't...
Crooked Ladder.
Crooked Ladder. So, I'd like to see...
Is there quite more?
Oh, absolutely.
Even, you know, Greenport, I'd like to be able to see that we're bringing...
Greenport's good contact. Montor Brewery can contact us, you know, South Shore.
Make sure you hit Long Island.
Yeah, and Long Island.
Long Island is our Riverhead home brew specialist now.
So, we want this to be very local grassroots. I mean, that's the whole theme about this, you know. And our, kind of our philosophy is catering is just like use local, in-season, whatever we can. My wife is my partner, a North Fork girl from New Suffolk, and, you know, we just, we really believe in promoting what is grown here, what's made here. And I think that's going to carry through the theme of the whole festival, of what we're really trying to do here, you know, give this an East End theme and a local theme.
And it really is a hyper-local event because all of us are people who are committed to East End. You know, we live here, we work here.
I don't think you're...
We have access, vendor access will be separate than the general public, so we'll keep all the vendors, you know, coming in and out in different ways, so there's phone appearance there as far as traffic. They're in earlier, they're out later, so that will, should add to less congestion, I hope, you know, by getting them in there. They'll have directions, they'll know where to report. Internally, we have, you know, a great infrastructure set up, the design of the, and the layout with the room that we have there, you know, we can be very flexible in doing a lot of different things. So, if one plan doesn't work, we can move it and shift things to another plan. So, once we get a final review and we have a sit-down to get into the details of what we have to do, you know, we're, we have the ability to make adjustments that anyone might say, oh, I think you might want to do this, or how about doing that, or how about bringing in the local brewery, or whatever may be. So, we're flexible. We're looking to develop this as a community, as, you know, participation, so everyone can give us input and make this a really successful event, you know, so everyone walks away saying, hey, that was great. That's what we all have to do.
Another piece of the community festival atmosphere, we're going to have a WPV VIP tent. Maybe Wally likes to talk a little bit about... W, can you hear her?
Yeah.
Wally, why don't you go up here? Our microphones are not working, and I'm not even sure what is being picked up.
The, one of the really good things, we're talking about grassroots, about that localism, none of this would have, you know, not been this community getting behind, the Conic Public Broadcasting, come on, I have a university, drop this license and put it up for sale. The people in this community grew out and were able to be able to, as a community, build a very good, so what I'm talking about, to acquire the license and save the only public broadcast that's naturalized on Long Island. So, that's another part of the great joy of this kind of out-of-the-air theory. We then, looking at the nonprofit communities, said, one of the reasons that we already got this was to help support community activity. So, we gathered together about 20 of the nonprofit organizations and began to develop this idea, and Ryan B., who's really the architect of the idea, and we put that together. So, this came out of the nonprofit community, and then we can just start them up, get them professionals, and have them put it together. But if this works, it will be one of the first times in the history of Atlanta that a coalition... that a coalition of nonprofit organizations can share the resources that will be accumulated by doing something big, tell one of us, we're going together, it's the goal to share that effort. You ask David Kahn, the American Community Foundation, to give us a vehicle whereby we can independently distribute this money on an independent basis to all any nonprofit, whatever their side of East End. So, that's, I want to share that with you as part of grassroots development and evolution of this whole thing. And so, that's, we will be there, the nonprofits will be featured there. Myron Levine has been very adamant that we have places for them, they have literature and these things. We will have, sort of, help them tend for the nonprofit organizations, so they can have a place that they can be anchored as well. So, it really is something that I think is the best thing. Very good.
Thank you.
You bet.
No, no, I said, like it.
I'd love, Claudia, to talk a little bit about our sales and marketing. If you just...
Well, again, you know, we, I think we have an incredible team, and Jim Durden, who isn't here today, is a sad harbor guy, born and raised here, and he's also Roger Waters, Pink Floyd, the role, is, he is the tour, the ticketing and merchandising manager for, that's like one of the most successful concerts of their own. So, he is our ticketing guy. We're going to be able to use his ticketing platform, so he's taking care of all of that. He understands pricing. We've already discussed that the general admission prices have to be very reasonable so everyone can come, not like those concerts in the past where the prices were so high, all of us fell, which we picked up that. So, that's really exciting, he's taking care of that. I'm leading the marketing effort to get the message out there, trying to put a coalition together of other corporate marketing people who will give their time pro bono. My advertising agency, Austin Williams, is doing all of the, they're going to work on the site, the creative look at the site, they're working on the website pro bono, that should be up very shortly. When we did our kickoff in September, we did a press conference at Montclair, we invited a lot of media. So, the media, a lot of local media and even further western media is already on board in terms of ticket giveaways and pro bono spots. We're working with Cablevision, hoping that they also come on as a large partner. So, I think that we have the resources to get the message out, to create the buzz, and that's really what we're doing right now. I think so far, so good. Bob Edelman, who isn't here today, he's CEO of Dance Papers. Dance is our major media sponsor. They will be doing major work. We're also running this kind of, something that's sort of fun, is that the graphic image for the concert itself, Dance Party East End, will be a competition among local artists that Dance Paper will run through there, you know, save all that, the list of artists that have done Dance Paper covers. So, we're about getting ready to launch that, so there'll be a lot of buzz around just creating the imagery for the concert itself, which will change every year, and...
I just love the fact that, you know, not the topic, but Bridgeham and Southampton, Watermill, all these areas, we get to showcase the North Fork now. You can't ask for a better venue than Montclair.
Yeah, and I mean, I think it's perfect too because you're able to draw from further. It's so, I think it's an easier place to get to too, so.
It's like in Montour.
All these people getting together and joining and making one to go forward, I think is, is a start, to get all these people and say, let's all do this for the nonprofits out here.
And I think we could go from here to the sponsorship, I think, on the next page. You know, we have already been very successful in bringing together sponsors. We've raised over $150,000 so far, and as you can see, I mean, we have great support from a lot of local businesses, and we're just getting started.
Great. Well, I think Wally's been, who has here, are great supporters of the East End and what we do out here. I mean, just looking at these names, it's amazing that they're joining something else to help the East End.
Well, you're looking at Riverhead Building Supply, there's nothing that they don't, I'm amazed at what Riverhead Building Supply, I don't, they must give half their profits away to charity because there's nothing charitable that happens on the East End they're not participating in.
Same as Tanker and the same as Montclair. Those are always involved in something to do with the, with nonprofits, and, you know, we have to thank all those people, including Southampton Hospital and Eastern Long Island and all the rest of these people.
There will still be sponsorships available, probably, which we know even.
Absolutely. It's a, you know, it's a big event to put on, and we have ambitious goals to put a lot of money away in the funds, so.
Good. It's a good kickoff.
It's hard to say no to all of this ground swell, you know, we've got all of it, it's like, hell, yeah, I want to join in.
I'd like to say no.
Yeah, right.
Can you sing a few verses?
And we've already said that the Long Island Community Foundation is the fund administrator critical to this whole, the delivery of the money back into the community. So, you know, it'll be really totally transparent, and I think that's what was important to the organizers of AFD, was that everyone had the opportunity. The other thing that's nice is that we do have, each year, we can look and see, like, if there were a natural disaster, we could take some more of the funds and put more of the funds towards that. So, there'll be those kinds of conversations.
Well, I think AFD is really the fundraising or the promoting.
Yeah.
And the Long Island Community Foundation is one of the sponsors.
Yes, yes. And just so you know about us, we're part of the New York Community Trust, which is one of the oldest and largest community foundations in the nation. They have over $2 billion charitable assets under management. They created us in 1978, so we've been around for over 30 years, providing grants to the Long Island community, and probably about a third of it has been to the East End community. So, we're very engaged with the nonprofits on Long Island, know a lot of the organizations, and feel we can bring that transparency into a process to make sure that, you know, the money's raised, really get out to all the organizations.
East End, this is all East End, this is not going past the five East End towns.
This particular fund is now going to be set up for formation of five East End brands.
Well, we want the West End money though.
Yeah, that's right.
This will attract a lot of...
You know, the other thing is there is a long-term goal for AFD, which is to provide resources going forward to all of these, to the nonprofits. It could be business resources, it could be financial advice, you know, the kinds of things that they may not, many of them may not have access to.
I do say, just one quick plug in for the ability of Bridgeham National Bank, because they've helped me over the years on numerous fundraisers, contributing money, contributing resources, and even selling tickets at the branches, so, you know, I mean, they have a big reach and they're very well respected.
I'm bringing all my resources to the table.
You're just following up on what I said about...
You said, Don, bring to all your voices.
They are. They step up to the plate.
The AFD founders, if you know, advanced to our iconic public broadcasters, the keeper from Wally, and one of the board members, Myron Levine, and then we have a long list of board members, which I'd love to identify here. Danielle Pardnali from Daniel Gell Sotheby's, and Sherry Winter Clary from Corporate Group, Barbara Pyrex, Mosquito Squad, Eva Lamere, Austin Williams, Dennis McDermott, Riverhead Project, Linda Miller, Hampton Creative Group, Skip Norrisick from Emil Norrisick and Sons, Joanne Ross from CBS, Robert Ross from South Hampton Hospital, Molly Smith, WPBB, and our organizational advisors are here, many of them, Peter Herman, and thank you Juan and Molly for coming today and answering questions, David O'Korn, Senator Fred Seal, who I want to thank for helping us with our 51(c)(3) and our bylaws, has been terrific. Senator Ken LaValle, South Hampton Town Councilwoman Bridget Fleming, and Riverhead Town Supervisor Sean Walter.
Well, I thank you for that.
Thank you. And we have a long list of founding nonprofit advisors, and these were the main ones that came on board that Wally was talking about in early meetings two years ago to discuss the formation of this effort. WPBB, Conic Land Trust, Southampton Hospital, Conic Landing, East End Hospice, Gil Hall, Bay Street Theater, The Retreat, Alan's Run, East End Arts, Nekita, Suffolk Theater, Art and...
And all of these organizations and others will be allowing us to, we'll be sending out email blasts. So, again, one of the exciting things is, it's not just one group of people trying to get the word out, we have all of these arms that will be spreading out and helping us sell tickets.
Right, you should touch, just let everybody know.
Well, I love it.
I think it's a good idea. Do you guys have any questions? Roll in our tickets.
Yes.
And what was the catalyst that spurred AFD? Was it just the fact that there was a lot of...
I think Wally can stick to that.
It's a question again.
What was, what was the actual catalyst that made AFD decide that that needed to be formed?
Well, it's part of what I was talking about before. It started, Myron Levine is on our board of the Conic Public Broadcasting. And he, he, and he's talked about this probably, he had a tragic accident in his family, and one of the ways that he has been working his way through some of the grief of that was to do something good for the community that could celebrate that tragedy. And same time, we were just getting started and wanted to be something for the Conic Public Broadcasting, put something back. So, he and I basically began to walk around and figure out how we might make this happen. And so, it grew out of just the two of us. He had been on the board of Southampton College when they did the All for the Sea concerts. And he came one day and said to me, why don't we do an All for the East End concert, which is the AFD acronym. And so, that's where it began. And then we said, well, you start then with the nonprofit organizations to work back, rather than saying, let's create some sort of a commercial venture that we do this for the nonprofits. And therein, and Robert knows he's kind of part of those meetings, it was remarkable that the people who were the executive directors of these organizations, the chief executive officers, came to meetings, all for two years through the summertime, because they really caught on to the idea that this is an unusual coalition on collaboration in the nonprofit community.
It's just such a great idea.
And the nice thing was that we were able to meet the professional people who know how to do it.
Right.
But it's not them coming first.
That's right.
The nonprofit community.
It was a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting it going.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. And we're going to keep it going on our part.
So, what's going to happen between six, just break down and reset up these? The farmer's market, for instance, would break down into a day run through, everything happening.
It's going to say on a Friday, on a Monday, well, it's the summer, so a lot of people are off, the Monday afternoon, two, 2,500 people, do you think you'll meet that target?
Well, those, Monday was, it started on a Saturday, and Monday is the day that the All for the Sea concert was, that was 10,000 people on a Monday, in the summer, in August, and also the Back to the Ranch concert, I think they're on a Tuesday. So, we figured, let's go off-peak. What happens is, it also affects the abilities of the police and fire departments.
Well, we loved it, Wally, when he came into the office, that was what he sold me on, because I was a little nervous about policing and everything.
Yeah, so, it seemed to work for everyone in the...
Yeah, it wouldn't work that weekend, we wouldn't be able to accommodate it unfortunately.
I mean, like restaurants, they can't come on a Saturday, but they can come on a Monday.
So, on a Monday, we know we're going to get the chefs, this is one of the successes of the VIP tents, is we get the chefs and the owners, they come in, and it becomes a thing for them also, and then they start talking about it in their restaurant, so it just, the word just kind of spreads, it's just...
It's also good for the artist, because the artist's perspective, they work during those weekends, and they go home, and they're part of the Long Island community or the East End community, they'll come and join us, and we'll be able to incorporate that everywhere.
I was wondering how you chose Monday.
In the stadium, you could have...
Thank you for playing it.
Yes, so there are extra photos that Peter provided in your folders that give you some additional site plans, tenting and staging.
Ooh, the stage has a little TV on, I think.
All right, so the chapter 90, has that been submitted?
It's been submitted, and there's no specific meetings with the police chief and fire marshal and other staff members prior to your approval. Do you want to put that back up on the screen?
No, no, I just wanted to have you understand.
I don't.
Well, you want me to give this to the fire marshal? Or do we have it? Okay, so you guys continue to have the meeting, I think we'll figure it out, this will be nonprofit. This is a wonderful thing, and I'm so happy that you chose our small town to host it. So, whatever we can do to make it happen.
Well, once we, once we have your blessing, then we will also start to talk about it more. We didn't want to really do that until we had all of your support and knew that we were going to be able to do that more.
I think...
John, I just, I was wondering, the reason it's on the North Fork is a combination of Pat Snyder and Juan, because we were looking at other places for it, and Pat said, let's talk to Juan and see if it...
Good job, Pat.
Which was great. Because I think it's a wonderful... I wish you guys thought speed and hoped to start it, let's have a great event, so we have more events from year after year.
Freak out. All right, thank you very much. Everybody is wearing the snow tomorrow. I don't want to get dirty in this.
It's not freak out.
It's not freak out?
It's not.
By Juan.
These are the same ones we had last time. These are the same, these are the same ones. I did circulate the other draft that had been provided to me by the Association of Towns. I have not, I have not received any response as far as proposed changes, and I don't know what we're made, if they were going to go with these rules, whether they would want to. Rule one, recite the fact that the second meeting in February is generally a Wednesday instead of Tuesday because of that President's Week and also the Association of Towns training meeting, and then in rule six, number 11, reports of special committees, I'm not sure we have that, so that would seem to come out, but other than that, I haven't received any confirmation.
Well, before we...
But that's, the reports, the committee reports, which is number seven, so number seven, number 11 seem to be the same.
I'm still reading all the stuff that you sent us from the other Association of Towns and the other towns that, that have them, and I think that Councilwoman Gori, I think we're not here because of an emergency in California, she said she was going to do some stuff over this weekend, so maybe we can put this off till next Thursday?
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at someone like you had Nguyenzer, of course, it's a much condensed and simpler format than we had, and I was fine with it, it's got some stuff in there I didn't agree with here. I feel that was a little wrong. And Sarah Togo, I think was also fairly good, except he had a three-minute rule to public, I think we want to take that out.
Well, I think we could...
I'm okay with any one of those groups, even the model ones.
Yes, because, yeah, some of them were good. I think ours went over the top, I think we're a little bit too intensive.
Bruce, Vince Trier came in with Robert's Rules, and he kept, with that book, Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules, and I wrote this the day after, sorry, to modify it, the day after he came in, so Robert's Rules was on my mind. Truthfully speaking, I think it would be very hard to run a town board meeting because you're so close to the public at the town board level using Robert's Rules. It's much easier to do it at the county legislature level or on the higher levels of government, but it'd be a little tougher. So, I'm not wet to this.
Right, but I think so...
But we have to do something.
I'd like to take down a new winzer, I think is perfect.
Well, then, when we do something, we also...
Sarah Togo was good, except maybe a three-minute.
I like the model words too.
Well, when we do something, we also have to follow it. We can't just do paperwork and say, okay.
I'm a gavel, you board members.
I think we need a supermajority to adopt something, wouldn't you think?
A supermajority to adopt it?
What? No, that's state law. No, 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 I'm just saying, if we come up with some agreement, I think it's got to be consented. I think it's gotta be consensus that most of the board will go with it. I hate to adopt something with a split board. It's gotta be, I think, something that's rare.
I think the best thing to do, because the ones that George is looking at probably are very similar to the Association of Towns model rules. Why don't you take a crack at drafting?
Taking theirs?
Taking theirs and then present them next week to the board.
I'll sit down.
Sit down with George, because this is, I think this one comes from the Association of Towns.
Sarah Togo, that was excellent.
The one is before us is pretty standard.
It's good, right?
Pretty standard.
We shall not speak unless recognized by King Walter.
I'm gonna gavel you about.
You're supposed to ask for the floor and be recognized by when you start speaking.
But this is basically just what we mean, it works, actually, that changes.
No.
Right, exactly.
It's still a comedy hour for the board sessions. Hours. Okay, so why don't you try, sit with George and the other council members and see if we can maybe tweak the Association of Towns.
We'll come back.
Next week, yeah, come back and say, thank you. Travel policy, Bill? Did we make Bill wait all day?
No, I came back.
You had to go.
I came back.
Okay, Chris, what, is he, Bill here?
He's just making coffee.
Hi, Chris, come up. The boathouse is quick, right?
Yeah.
I have a feeling it's not. I wanted to talk to Dan.
I know what it's about.
He makes a lot of stuff in executive session that's not. So I'm gonna ask him to come here first before we talk about something.
It's a potential...
Everything's potential litigation.
I think this one.
Okay, what is this?
This was the original location of where we were putting the boathouse. And then this is, this is a simple picture of basically what the boathouse would be. It'll have some kind of secure...
Moreies?
The...
Do you have one?
Maybe.
So originally, Ken, Tessa, and I have Rappus have looked at locations, multiple locations. We talked to the board about putting the boathouse down by the riverfront, and we picked out that location, which we...
It's problematic.
Right. And then with the recent flooding, we might wanna look at moving it on a little bit north. And now that the Super Department acquired the property, McDermott, the Rowing Clubs like that property...
That's always been my choice.
So Ken, Ken had looked at that. I just wanted to get it.
What, 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 what's your choice? What choice?
The McDermott house in the backyard.
I just think this year, there's a lot of clutter on the vacant space that we have there now.
Yeah, we did it because we needed a location. We tried to get it on the East End Arts Council property, but they met with some resistance.
And they, and actually, the Rowing Club had even looked at like a floating house, which they have in some places, which is, it's almost like a barge. And, and that's neat. There's actually pictures online, but for downtown, it wasn't gonna work. So it'd be nice to just purchase.
So the question is, if we...
I'd rather go with a barge than...
No, floating.
No, no, but I mean, yeah.
I agree, but I would wanna go with the barge, because I don't want it to get destroyed in a hurricane or something.
You got to take it out if you went there.
Yeah, East End, if we put that up in the backyard, that can be moved. So if we have to rebuild the pump station in less than 20 years, which with the new projects we're seeing, that pump station is gonna, that building's gonna come down probably in the next five years, we can move it.
Right. So we would just disassemble it and then put it back up on a construction.
And if they want it, I know there was supposed to be an RFP for the, for the house there, but if East End Rowing wants to use the house, why do we even have to go to RFP?
Well, that's what I said. I said, I don't know why we're going RFP. Well, we can give it to, to a local group and say, okay, East End Rowing, you handle the East End, they handle Wade River.
It's supposed to be quiet.
I think we can license it.
License it.
Yeah, license it.
Yeah, you know, let's just do something for, for the East End, the Rowing Club, the kids, anybody that supports that club. I think that's a great idea.
Right now, the activity would help, just add whatever.
Well, my vote is to put it behind, put that structure behind McDermott's house and to, if they wanna use the McDermott Avenue house temporarily till it gets torn down, because it's gonna get torn down.
Eventually.
Yeah, I'm gonna say about five years or less.
Use the house to...
Whatever, offices, not boats, off, whatever. It's something that they may wanna use it for, if they have a used for being room or something. And if they don't wanna use it, we'll do an RFP, but I don't think you're gonna get much use.
Michael along with...
I don't know how much backyard you have.
It's, it's big enough for that.
And they might run some fence around it. And it's a little bit easier to secure that area without...
Make it so.
Okay, prepare a rest. See if they wanna use the building. If they do, talk to Councilman Deeply Hill when she comes back, and she was the proponent of the RFP. I, I would be just as happy to let them license it temporarily.
Yeah, that's just...
Okay.
Even the RFP's problem.
They had this here this morning, but I guess they didn't see that, they were in...
Yes, George, they were, they were mobbing.
They're very excited about getting us a growing improvements.
They thought it was RFP, and they wanted to have a jump on it. So there's not gonna be an RFP in this.
All right, let's make it happen. Whatever you have to do.
Great, thank you.
Get it done. Here, Chris, here's extra copies of that. All right, is Bill here?
Yeah. John, I gave you the resolution board actually.
Can you talk to Dan McCormick? Because John knows what this is, chapter, this is chapter fifty.
Yeah, it's alarm.
It's what?
The alarm code.
It's about, it's about the fine and who, who we should find, who we shouldn't find.
Yeah, that's...
That's the basic thing.
Right, that's not executive.
Not executive, it's just a...
Well, I think he was looking to discuss certain entities that are looking to become exempt or not, what, and the licensing, it's fine. I don't think it's litigation.
I don't think it's litigation.
What he spoke to me about was that the, the people who are not hooked up to a central plan does not, do, do not wanna be fined.
All right, I don't wanna discuss an executive.
That's what he...
We don't wanna discuss an executive.
Okay, so you want him to come in and finish up?
Yeah.
I want you to explain that to him in advance as, as only you can. All right, travel policy, what happened, one of the things that we had to do as a result of our audit, they, certain policies we don't have an effect on. And travel policy is one of them. And so the travel policy was drafted with Bill, Tara, and Matt, and went through the, didn't it go through the Labor Management or just Matt? I guess it just went through Matt. I don't know.
I think it just went through Matt.
And this is what we came up with, and obviously, I'm not going to ask you to pass judgment on it. We'll probably put it back on the next week, so if you have a chance to read it. But Bill, why don't you go over the highlights, especially the fees that would be paid and what it's based on?
Okay. We just want to include a couple of basic travel expenses that would be universal. Your first trip to and to front, your employment is covered by the University of Nebraska.
Is that anywhere after that?
Tara, have a seat, because you're a artist. That, then we would pay you the federal rate, which is fifty-five cents a mile now that's taken to someplace. So that would be other travel as part of your normal course of duty. You also have travel, let's say if you went to a one-day seminar or a meeting that's not in town at all, unless you went to Southampton, whatever, maybe reimburse your travel there. This kind of spells all that out. The third one would be overnight travel. One of the things that we're highlighting here is, is that any overnight travel needs approval from the board. The other two would just need department head and supervisors approval. So if you go into a meeting in Southampton or in Babylon or whatever it may be, you just need approval from the department head and supervisor. Again, that's reimbursed fifty-five cents a mile and whatever other expenses if you had to pay for a glass of beer and whatnot. The overnight travel is really one of the things that we changed up a little bit. There is a, the federal government gives a rate, they call it per diem rate, by area of your stations. So for instance, if you went from city to a hotel overnight, it would be more, and meals obviously would be more than if you went to Albany or any other town. So the federal, the federal government gives a list and give you per diem rate. That should be at the bottom of the last page in that package.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
Yeah, that's it.
No, he's got, Bill's showing that.
Oh, no. You have to push here.
Okay, this is, that's it.
What, is that it? That's it, he said?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, just checking who wants to get.
One of the reasons that we have to do this is we will get to, we will get a voucher back where somebody spent, let me back up. I work with the federal government, and they would give you, when we went, we called it TDY, Temporary Duty. I think they gave us thirty-five dollars a day. And whatever you could eat for thirty-five dollars a day, you got. And if you wanted to spend fifty, that extra fifteen dollars was on you. So recently, we've had some vouchers that have come in where people have spent forty-five dollars per one meal for dinner. And I have to pay it, because there's no policy saying I can't. And the board approves these vouchers up to a thousand dollars, up to five hundred dollars, or whatever it is. So there's really no guidance. I'm not paying somebody to go to a five-star restaurant while they're on temporary duty someplace. So that's where we are discussing.
Is the allowance in here? Yes, you have it for the rates on the...
Yeah, yeah, the last one over.
The last column.
So, and in the past, we've, we've spent, I can't tell you how many hours in auditing these vouchers, sending them back to the department head, to the employee, back to you, back to me, and to just allow twenty-five dollars. Or because we didn't have the documentation of, of, whatever, maybe we have to make sure there's no Apple, we gotta make sure, you know, there's no sales tax and things of that nature. The time it costs...
I can't believe that Riverhead, he, Riverhead is, is the highest on the chart.
Oh, is it?
Well, that's a couple of that.
Okay. I think, you know, if Riverhead, Ron Conklin, Ward Russell, they lump all three of them together as, I guess, Long Island. So if you go anywhere on Long Island, you would use that rate. So what, what often happens is you will have more than eating this per diem rate, because as the supervisor says, you went and bought dinner somewhere, and you have to reimburse it for it. And then it takes, the time it takes to process that after. This clears it up, it specifies, this is what, this is what you get here. Includes incidentals, so if you go to a hotel, didn't bring a toothbrush, you have to buy it all, includes all that stuff. We're not arguing over, you know, this, why did you buy this toothbrush instead of bringing it and so forth. So it just spells it out a little clearer.
So if you traveled to Buffalo, you're just getting fifty-six bucks. However you spend it, you spend it. If you brown bag every day and you put fifty-six dollars in your pocket, fifty.
So you don't have to document the fifty-six dollars?
On the per diem rates, you don't have to document it. You just get it. So again, if you go to McDonald's and, and pay ten bucks or whatever it is, it's, you know, it's up to you. But we're processing the same. We don't have to worry in that case. It's all gonna even out, because we wanted to pay more than the per diem rate for certain people that spend seventy dollars and pay less for people who spend twenty dollars.
In the documentation and the man-hours to, to figure this out, we're spending hundreds of dollars to justify a forty-five dollar dinner.
Hopefully, it'd be somewhat of an honest system here, that if, you know, I spent twenty-five dollars, I'd give back twenty-five.
But we're not giving, we're not, we're not giving it to them.
Why would you keep it? I wouldn't keep it.
Yeah, we're not giving, we're not giving it to them upfront. We're reimbursing it. So once they've asked for the, you know, they've asked for the...
Can I ask you one question? Meals, on the last one over, that's not including sales tax and tips?
That's, that's everything. It's everything. So if you went out to dinner and repaid...
That's everything.
Okay, and you paid forty-seven dollars per meal, and, and whatever it is that you tip them, and it comes out to fifty-something dollars with tax and everything else. Well, again, in Albany, you're getting...
Yeah, so why do you need this here, then?
For hotel, you're still gonna get, you're not gonna get, like, hotel, you're not gonna get a flat hundred dollars for the hotel. I don't think that's our intention. You're gonna have to submit your voucher, and we're gonna reimburse it.
Right, the hotel, that's just, that's just the rates we go by. We're only saying the per diems for the meals. The reason being is there are some conferences that sit in this hotel, and if it says seventy-seven dollars is the standard rate, it's seventy-nine, then we're gonna pay the hotel. But if it's sixty-nine dollars, we're gonna pay the sixty-nine dollars.
No, no, this is saying sales tax and tips, which will probably be, when you have a meal. So let, that's covered under the per diem.
Correct. Yes, if it's per diem, sales, tax, and tips is all included in that.
And what we're saying to you, honestly, Bill, what we're saying to you is if the rate is seventy-seven dollars a night, and you're going to a seventy-nine dollar hotel, you're paying the three dollars. I don't wanna be paying...
So we wanna also make the lodging per diem, too, because there will be issues where you go to a hotel, because that's where it's being, that's where the event is being held. And the event is, I don't know, let's say ten dollars more, because you're at that hotel. Are we using per diem for that? We don't really have, we don't have an issue in my office with paying for the hotel, because typically, you know...
That's how the federal government does it. You've had to go to a hotel that was within the cost that they set forward.
Okay.
So, you know, it, I don't, we'd do it for both. So this has to be amended to do it for both. And then if you, you know, if it's, like, for the Association of Towns, probably does cover it for two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. But for the Association of Towns meeting, if the, if it doesn't cover it, you're gonna have to find another hotel? Or you're gonna need a special exception from the town board? Or eat the five dollars or whatever. The fact is, this is supposed to be, set everything uniform, whether it's hotel or per diem, you've got a uniform rate.
So you're gonna get your allowance.
You're gonna get your allowance.
So if you go to budget?
No, no, we're, we're not gonna give you two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. We're gonna, we're saying that the maximum we'll pay is two-ninety-five, but we're only paying what, up what you got charged. So if it's two-ninety-five...
Just putting a seal on it.
Correct.
So at the bottom of the, of the lodging, which is on page two, I mean, I'm just gonna put not to exceed per diem.
And, and what's going to happen with the way the federal government does it, is if you, if the per diem's two-ninety-five and your hotel was sixty-nine dollars, you're only getting sixty-nine dollars.
Right. But if, but if it's six, if the per diem is sixty-nine and your rate is seventy-five, then without the exception from the board, we're gonna pay sixty-nine.
You're gonna pay sixty-nine, you better not eat that much.
Can I just ask a question now? I see, and I'm just picking Manhattan, because that's the largest one, two-ninety-five. But it all goes down to two-oh-four in the winter. Why is that?
Winter.
But same people, and they, they don't reduce rates.
They got separate rates, just like Riverhead does. Riverhead's one, Riverhead's one-twelve to the summer, that's one-two.
I don't even know if the two-oh-four covers the Association of Towns.
Well, we do, we're a...
Well, you know, we can do it, what we can do.
New York and New York.
You can go, you...
They have a big summer.
Summertime is, we, we totally have the function. And these are specific rates, actually, for twelve and thirteen. So they may change again next year if you wanna go by, you know...
This works for the federal government throughout the entire United States. I don't, I've never traveled with the federal government overseas, but I'll bet you they do it overseas. But it's good enough for President Obama's group, it's good enough for us.
Where do you get these rates from?
They're from, the, the federal government publishes these, it's standard per diem rates.
So with the, with the main meal per diem, you're gonna get the flat, whatever it is. But for the hotel per diem, we'll pay the hotel up to. So I'm just gonna not give them to exceed per diem at the bottom of the hotel.
I don't, the only problem I have is it's reimbursable, right?
Yeah.
So I realize that if I go into Manhattan, I get seventy-one vouchers for my meal, and I can go get a happy meal for five dollars, and I'm not gonna pocket sixty-one and a nap.
Well, so I'm saying...
Yeah, you will.
You should be something, I don't think you give it back.
Why not?
That's, that's how the federal government does it.
So we'll even up that to...
That's great.
If I buy the ballots.
No, I know what you're saying. You always, you always had the receipt for everything, the reimbursement, you always had to get. And I think that should be done, continually done.
Does the state control it?
What we're saying about the hotels, a hotel is reimbursable. So in other words, even though those are the limits for the hotel, we're not just giving you two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars to stay in Manhattan, because it happens to be November, whatever, whatever month it is. We're giving you up to, so of course you're twenty-ten dollars, but we're gonna reimburse you, showing that you paid the two-hundred-and-ten. That's been...
Last question about the state. Does the state do it similar to this?
The controller's office.
I know the county does that. I am not aware of how the state does it.
I think the controller does it.
Jill, if the state controller's office did the whole state...
I like that, because you know, I think a certain dollars, a happy gift, five dollars.
Well, what's happening, what I'm telling you is happening...
Get three martinis on the table.
The cost of process, you have to look at the cost of processing a voucher to save on your happy meal. Well, so we had, we've had, we've had requests for reimbursements that have exceeded the per diem rate, and included things where someone was away for and, and included things where someone was away for a couple of days, like chips and drinks.
Oh, yeah, right.
And mints and things like that, that, well, how do, do we reimburse as well?
And they eat three times a day. You're not just talking one happy meal. You're talking if they're gone for a full day, you get, yeah.
So, so which one needs to be just allowed, say, well, this was in between your, your meals and, and, and then so some of them exceed per diem and then other people put it and it's below the per diem. But the, by giving the, the per diem, it's not gonna cost the town any more. It may cost you if you, if you spent more on meals and, and give you money if you spent less. But the process, but the processing, like for shoes. But the processing of it, uh, we have a voucher, I have three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and the person put in for four-hundred. Well, the board approved three-seventy-five, the person put in for four-hundred and something dollars. And we've injected it for over forty-two dollars and it was just, I don't know how much time, how much money and time to fight over that forty-two dollars.
So now we.
And, and you have to think, we've seen it, if, if you go to a conference with three or four people and you, and three or four people who went to dinner, you're gonna get one bill.
Well, in this case.
And how do you, how, how does everybody put in for that?
Well, everyone.
Unless you ask for separate checks. And, uh, down in Florida, that's, everybody gets, but up here, it's hard to get a separate check.
And you, you made so many people, you know, you lose the receipt, you have your credit card receipt, well, was there alcohol and, and?
Yeah.
And what else was there?
Of course there was.
A second person, although there wasn't. I've got affidavits, but you know, instead of going through all that, it's meant to stand.
That was a sixteen-dollar glass of Sprite.
I, I agree.
On the rocks.
Okay.
Uh, so I'd like to put this on for the next board meeting for adoption. Probably screws us all up with the Association of Towns because I think the rate for the Association of Towns is less than two-hundred-and-four dollars.
I don't know, I'm thinking.
I don't, excuse me, I think the, um, cost of the hotel is more than two-hundred-and-four dollars.
You weren't doing.
Board, board, again, if, if the rate happens to be, you go to, and that's where the hotel is, then the board can approve.
Hey, they're gonna buy your house over a wolf.
No, but if you're gonna give us seventy-one dollars for meals, then we can figure it out.
Now, what is this scratch sheet you got? Is this something you're making up?
This is something that we've had for a while, it's just really a way of them estimating.
And I think LeBron is the only one that actually fills it out.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be this way, we're, we're putting it as an example, but when you give us your, your estimate, come to the board and say it's gonna cost me, again, in this case, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to go in and the board approves it. This would spell out where it's coming from.
Make this as part of the resolution. If they don't submit this, they don't go.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
All right, perfect. Make it part of this policy.
And it's only for, it's only for overnight.
On the second page, it says tax.
It's only for overnight?
All right, perfect.
Yeah, this one is only for overnight because including meals and lodging and so forth. We can make one without lodging if you want, but typically, if you're not overnight, you may have a lunch meal. If you get there at nine in the morning, you stay till five since you're away from your desk and you can't bring a brown bag or whatever we would pay for lunch. So at that case, in that case, you would actually just give us the, you have to go on for a whole day. So you wouldn't get a per diem rate, you would just say, I spent fifteen dollars on lunch this whole month or whatever it is.
Oh, sometimes you can go to a meeting in Albany, drive up, you can drive back at night and just have lunch day after.
Every one of those trips to Albany, I think that I made the staff pay their own. I don't think we ever reimbursed anything. I made them pay their own way.
Good for you.
I never, I don't, what I told them was, listen, you have to eat anyway, eat here.
Now, I.
And I eat cheap at a cafeteria, so it's not like it's over expensive.
I think.
All right, um, whose child is here to interview me about the impending, um, snowstorm? So Joey, can you, you know.
What do you have to do, what do you have to do with the snowstorm?
Nothing.
You gonna make it go away or something?
I guess.
Must have been a good prayer service this morning.
Absolutely, you should come, I invited your pastor on. Um, Joey, why don't you go, Jill, can you sit here for, and, um, I know what this is about, so it's silly, not, you should be.
When I went to, uh, Hop-on for the, let's say, the speech about the, uh, the.
The state control.
The manufacturer.
Well, we have, yeah, we have.
And then the federal rates probably.
That, that goes across. Well, maybe your mileage would, as you currently.
That might, that's a mileage would.
Yes.
Well, we have to pick one or the other.
And if you want, you know, wherever you're, wherever we expect you to go.
Yes, oh, okay, where was I, where was I? I, every trip, I try to take you to like Thomas once.
I did remember.
I guess you leave him?
We're guys.
I'll be right back.
We were down, we were down to the first right here.
Where's the generation?
It was different now, money is probably on the preservation league of New York evolution.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So as most of you know, the.
And it's across the board.
Main Street gave the Southern Theater two-hundred-and-thousand dollars as our anchor in two thousand and ten. They recently got paid, they were down here for their audit and they were very impressed with all the work that's happened at the theater. They sent me an email on Monday saying the New York Preservation League has this two thousand and thirteen Excellence Awards that they thought this would be a perfect application. So I contacted the theater, they're gonna do, there's, they're asking for all kinds of plans and backup stuff. So they're working on that. So I'm just asking the, it makes us for a stronger application if the town board is the one who's nominating the Southern Theater. I spoke to Richard Wines and he's on board as well, so, um, there's. No cost involved. And as far as the theater goes, this particular one doesn't include any grant money, but I think it could help them and or us.
Well, it's, it's for exposure.
Yeah.
There's a deadline now that he would need, if he wants to ratify it.
February fourteenth.
So I was hoping you guys would sign one of these.
February twelfth.
They're good, yeah.
Oh, you're right.
Very good.
Thank you, Jill. Nomination's supposed to be by Valentine's Day, isn't that cool? Excellent. And, and you're gonna, you're gonna prepare?
Yeah.
You're gonna prepare what they, what they're looking for?
Me and boss, Spiro, at the theater.
Okay, good.
Boss, yeah.
You wanna sign for this, or what?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Family.
Sandra, I get you.
Dan?
Yes.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning. Where are you at?
Chapter forty-five, false alarms. I'm here. Good day, this man. All right, I originally asked for this on adjourned session, I understand, I'm interested in moving more forward. I can address this in work session, but I will keep the party's name confidential at this point. An issue has arisen concerning the scope of registration regarding false alarm scale of the system. The specific issue is whether an individual decentralizes their alarm. That is, they rendered it capable of sending a radio signal to an agency, usually a security company, who then notifies our PD of an apparent break-in or a fire, is still subject to registration. Twenty-five-dollar annual fee, ten-dollar renewal each year. Under our code, there is specific language that defines that emergency fire or security device as a device that sends both a radio signal to a third party, that is, a security agency, and any alarm system that produces an audible or visual signal designed for third parties to then contact the PD on their own. So for example, an alarm system starts ringing a bell. A neighbor or a, uh, adjacent property owner hears the, the alarm signal and calls the police department. The police then respond to that particular site, only to find out it was a false alarm.
Or the fire department.
Or the fire department in an emergency regarding a, a apparent fire.
Does that happen often?
Well, we have a specific incident right now where the property owner is questioning whether or not they actually have to register their alarm device.
Is it not hooked up to a command?
That looks up to, but you know something?
But it's still audible, they have an audible signal. And I've explained to these folks that, look, whether you have a central, centrally-stationed alarm or it's an audible signal, the police are still expending the same resources, right? They're still expending gas. Most importantly, they're being taken out of a potential sector situation involving another bona fide emergency to respond to a false alarm.
And police officers in the fire department, for example, can still get hurt by going to a false alarm that's an ordinary false alarm. Now, years ago, and I don't know how we got away from this, but years ago, we used to have a sticker on every, uh, commercial establishment with a number. So if you pick, if you pass someplace and you hear the alarm or see a fire, all you would have to do is call the police department, you say it's, it's number eight-thirty-three. They would then look up eight-thirty-three and, because a lot of people don't know who, who are owners and who are responders to alarms. And maybe when they register, we should go back to that sticker program and have them put the sticker on the front. So somebody.
I should do that, Steve, New York.
Yeah, we, we used to have it here and then I, it, it disappeared.
But I think Dan.
Just have a little gold shield.
We'll answer your question, Dan. I, I, it's, it makes no difference whether it's ADT calling an alarm at a house or whether it's a neighbor calling an alarm.
Yeah.
The services are still rendered, which is what this was, to cover the cost of alarms that are faulty or not being well-maintained that causes.
That's right.
Multiple loosenesses. Once or two, you get one or two bites of the apple anyway, so I don't understand why.
Question, I think because, I, I don't, I was wondering how does that really happen where someone calls in and the alarm they hear?
I, I think.
We've had at least two instances.
I think the question comes down to whether this person should have to register their alarm because they're not attached to a centralized station, but yet it says they do.
Correct. So I gave you code provision.
So there's really, I don't think, I don't think there's anything in question, really. Well, Dan, let's just, how do we determine? It may be a alarm, a, a alarm inside, it's just a scared of burglary, out loud, you hear that in Europe. Now, how do we determine that alarm next to one that's audible outside the, the business? What if it's just one of these small ones, it's just a ring, it's not really. It's only, it's only for false alarms. If there's an actual burglary, they don't get charged.
No, but he's saying you don't hear the alarm outside. But somebody walked in past, hears it and they call.
Who's to say how loud the alarm is, it may just.
Well, you don't have to be loud, it's just.
Right, to answer the councilman's question. Captain Gabrielson, if you look under forty-five dash two, we actually define a fire or police alarm device specifically related to your question regarding an alarm that produces an audible or visible signal designed to notify persons within audible or visible alarm range of the signal. Well, we always know that's the case. Why? Because the police are summoned either by a third-party complaint, neighbor, resident, somebody just driving by, or their own devices, a sector car is passing a particular place and they hear that audible sound. Since the PD's necessarily involved, we always know it was caused by either an audible or visual alarm signal. So to date, that hasn't been an issue because somebody's always calling these in for us and that's how we know.
I'm just saying, if there was an alarm, somebody just put, and then it's expensive, just a little buzzer kind of alarm was off. Not to notify anyone just to scare the.
Commercial?
Or else sometimes you're sorry, you have a light, you should hit it with a flashlight.
Yeah, but if someone called the police.
It depends what kind of vestment he puts into it, does he want a real long?
That would be.
Well, I would answer that by saying, I, I would answer that by saying, if that signal's still designed to notify third parties and we respond, then the code provision's applicable. The only way it wouldn't be is if you completely disabled it such that it can't produce any audible signal or visual signal to notify third parties, but then you don't have an alarm, right? And a long by its nature is designed to notify.
Yeah, or, or scare the.
What's the question before the board?
The question is, uh, this.
Whether the, whether the fee, that the twenty-five-dollar registration fee for this alarm system is applicable because he doesn't have a centralized station, and I say yes.
It's defined as you said.
It's really a good point.
Quite frankly, this particular individual will remain unnamed because we're not in exact session. It said he's reached out to a certain board members and posed this question. And there was a question from the board asking the applicability, that's why I put on for today, to obtain.
I have seen calls from, from business owners that wanna know if they have to register. They haven't had, their alarm hasn't been, hasn't gone off, there hasn't been any first responders or police going there. And they wanna know if they need to respond if they're not hooked up to a centralized station. So you're saying the answer's yes.
Right, and right, I didn't know the answer to it right now till I read the law, but, right, people have asked me too and I wasn't sure.
I wasn't sure.
But the, the whole reason behind registering is so, just in case there is an alarm or if somebody decides to smash all the windows out on Main Street, which, well, it's like a few stores they've called. We know who to contact because there's contact information because that's.
Going back to the old system, that we have.
That's why, that's why the registration is so important. And it's, it's, I think the town's got over seventeen hundred hours trying to implement this law of nailing. I mean, so it's, 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 it's cost prohibitive.
And if there is no alarm, there's no registration.
And if it's natural burglary, there's no.
There's no signal to that alarm, there's no registration.
So I've got five, five actually applications. What, what did your alarm say? I don't even have one, I got fire, I register or else this business, this occasion. I have a course history.
Well, even a small.
You have a shotgun.
Even a small audible alarm, which, uh, passed by years, or someone walking or running past.
I would tell this person.
Uh, and the police respond, I would assume that, that they then would get a letter from the police department telling them that they did have an audible alarm going off.
Low trigger and registered.
And, and you have to register, yeah.
First offense.
Yeah, so a lot of people can get away with it if they never go off.
Yeah, if it goes off, they would register. Telling them to register, but if they didn't register, we would know.
Right, we would know until something happened.
Well, it, well, I, I know, I know where this is semi, right.
Okay.
I hear you, okay.
No, no, Jill said.
Unless I'm not sure now?
Well, I'm, no, I'm sure.
I'm sure. Are you done?
We're finished.
Actually, I wanna read, I wanna read two fast things up.
Oh, my goodness.
It's not on agenda.
What, what am I intended? Hold on, it's just a, because this is gonna move the alarm and we're gonna have to. Okay, this here, George. This is the parking lot behind, uh, Main Street, uh, on the river. Where the white lines are.
Could this, uh, and the.
And this white line can go right across to the entrance to where Riverhead Grill is. We wanna make everything, uh, with cars apart, three-hour parking, everything behind it unlimited parking.
That's on three hour or two hour?
Three hour.
Don't we have two hours?
Two hours in the code, but then, we, it, five years ago, they want that added, so we took that out. But I don't think we decoded it.
Well, we have to make it in system with the code.
Yeah, so, no, that's what I said, we have to change the code for three hours. If someone goes in for dinner in a restaurant, you may be in a restaurant for more than two hours.
I want you to be there for three hours.
We wanna encourage more the better.
Absolutely, that's no problem with that. And the code provision written and let's dinner.
Okay.
So that's, that's the parking lot in the big district, I mean, the parking district, okay.
Yeah, it's in a parking district.
Okay.
That's only because of the apartment house, so that people in the apartment house could pull parking.
One of the things the town is going to have to consider is when summer wind opens, we may have to do some code provisions.
Summer wind?
That, um, yeah, for the flooding when the parking lot came flooding, like, that the town will, under certain orders will issue an emergency declaration that all cars have to be removed. And if they're not, the town will have a towing company tow them. And it's to the benefit of the residents of the summer wind and everybody down there because even during the hurricane, there was one poor soul that left his car there and it was.
Yeah, it's up, it's up in Calvert, you know.
Is it? Probably. All right, is that it? We done?
Uh, yeah, 'cause I can't.
You need to build it, you put ours.
Yeah, I think we could just put it in the code, you know.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just amend the code, that's all.
We just have it here.
Okay.
I had a motion to adjourn, go eat lunch.
Motion to adjourn.
Wanna make a motion, we adjourn?
I have.
All in favor?
All right. I'll go tomorrow for, you know, that's what you call an ass, you know, it's so today is the day of liquids, no real food.
Shut the camera off while he's discussing.
I have, I have an affection.
Like reality check.
I have bad tooth, I have to go look at it.
What I just said last week?
And my doctor's, we're not, so now I, I guess I can eat now, we're only, they want you to appear up before they did.